On the record.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. It's January fifteenth, 2020. And it's a little after six o'clock. We're in the city council chambers, three forty-five High Street in Hamilton. We do have one public hearing this evening, and that'll be heard later on in the agenda. That involves changing some zoning of some property that is on Grand Avenue. Let's do a roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab. Brown.
Here.
Moller.
Present. I'll set the motion to excuse Councilmember Nab for reasons known to council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. Now, I'm next going to go to an offering of prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Almighty God, guide this city council and administration to take positive action to benefit Hamilton and its citizens. Protect our public safety, utility, and other city personnel throughout this year as I help our citizens, businesses, and our visitors. Know you all have a safe, productive 2020. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, Susan Fly of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anne Combs, there she is. Welcome, Anne. Happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
We have special presentations now, and presentation that we have on tonight's agenda, Home and Garden Awards.
Okay, we have a Holiday Decoration Award.
Why don't you go give an idea of what these awards are about, please?
Oh, I've done this for a number of years. I just ride around and find a house that I think they've worked hard on, and I just want to reward people that work hard in our city.
Great.
And so anyway, Chuck went with me, my buddy, and he had heard about this one on Facebook. And they said, oh, wait till you see this house on Sanders, you know? So we're driving down there and we went, oh, that's it. Oh, my Lord, that is it. And it was just incredible. And what was so cool was it looked like he bought too many of the things and it went into two neighbors' houses. And sure enough, that was the truth. But wonderful couple, they're here. And Karen and Steve.
Can I need you a picture?
Picture of the house.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we want to hear about this.
Yeah, look at that.
Just drive by next year.
We want to hear about how you got this done.
You should ask very much.
I'll go buy it all the time.
Anyway, it started out small and kind of grew, grew. Then I went to the neighbors and said, can I give you your yard a little bit? Lights? He made the mistake of saying, do the whole thing. And then an autistic gentleman next door to us on the other side, and his main caregiver came out when I was finishing up one year and said, can we put some lights in our yard? I said, well, I didn't know if it would bother Jamie. Oh, he loves lights. All right. So I just kept on going. And now I do our house and our yard and both neighbors.
Isn't that wonderful?
That is quite a display. It takes over all Sanders.
Take a big flyer.
The traffic would be great.
You'll love it as far as extension cords will go.
Cool. Congratulations.
Mayor, when you walk up to the house, the mailbox is all lit up. And then all of a sudden, it opens and this letter comes out that's all lit up. That is the coolest mailbox.
Everybody just get out and walk around so you can see it all.
Everything moves.
Yes, almost everything is animated and moves in some sort. We'll be in the house, you'll hear voices outside, and you look out the window, there's kids with their parents taking pictures of them around stuff. It's like, that's what it's for.
This year, Hamilton, next year, National Awards. How many?
Don't use that video.
Oh, no, no. We also have a certificate, City of Hamilton, Ohio. This is certified by Karen and Steve Cook of Painted Center Sanders Drive. Everybody awarded a certificate of recognition for City of 2019 Holiday Garden Appearance Award in honor of their holiday decorations and showcasing the holiday spirit at their home. Someone else, Mayor, and all members of council. Congratulations, and thank you very much for spreading around the holiday spirit. Anne, I've got to say few words. No? Steve told us. They asked you. Is there another one? Is there just the one?
Just the one.
Just the one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just a couple pings of it.
Oh, okay, so that's the house next door, I guess, right?
Right.
We didn't award for them. I mean, I guess it should give it to you, but Anne, something to do with this, didn't it?
Trying to get it to come, they're busy.
We'll get this to them just because they participate in it.
If you would like it, we can drop it off. That'd be great. I mean, they're next door.
Exactly. Next door.
Okay, we just walk it over.
Thank you. We're neighbors, too. You get watered.
Water.
Give that to Zach for me.
I will. He helps out once in a while.
Does he? Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
And that takes care of special presentations. Next on the agenda, this audience of citizens, individuals who wish to make comment, may speak during this part of the agenda, excuse me, or may reserve the right to speak specifically when the item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who attend to address City Council are required to sign this public speaking book, and it was in the back of the room. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. First, we have Alfred Baron. Baron, if you come to the podium, state your name and your address and the subject you are addressing.
Okay. My name is Alfred Baron, one twenty-three Chestnut Street, Hamilton, Ohio. Mr. Mayor, I don't want to barge your ear down. I had several items on here. I thought I resolved one of them. You have a copy of the letter on the first item?
I have a copy of that letter in front of me right now. Let me, let us just look into this, the Jones matter?
Right. He's been talking in the railroad, so I spoke to Mr. Williams, so you guys are going to get together and collaborate or whatever.
We will talk, and we'll use that as a, as a starting point is what we mail to them. Okay?
Okay. Clarification on this five-dollar registration fee, is that for vehicle re-registration, a five-dollar fee for repair of roads? How does that apply for each vehicle or per person, per household, or what?
It's actually a license plate fee. Dave, can you give some information to Mr. Baron about that?
It's per vehicle when you redo the tags on the vehicle. It's a five-dollar additional fee, and yes, it is for roads.
But it doesn't seem quite fair to, you know, say if I own more than one vehicle, but I can only drive one vehicle at a time. I got a handicap sticker, but I can move it from vehicle to vehicle.
This was a way of, of getting individuals who, well, it was another pot that we were able to use to put towards streets. I think what's probably the most important thing about this, Dave, is this is going to go into a special fund.
Correct.
That is very transparent, and it's going to have its own fund number, too, I guess. Is that correct, Dave?
That is correct.
Do you want to tell that to Mr. Baron? That'd be pretty interesting, I think, about how we're handling those monies.
Yeah, the money's going to go into segregated fund. It'll raise, we're estimating, about $300,000. And that money will specifically be used for road repairs. We'll be able to track it. It'll be completely transparent. All citizens will be able to look at it, you know, anything, anything you'd like to see.
But my point is, just same with the handicap placard, like I said, I can only drive one vehicle at a time, right? So you charge me that five-dollar fee for that. It's like penalizing for having more than one vehicle.
I don't understand what you mean by that. I'm sorry.
Well, otherwise, I'm going to say, say, I own five vehicles, so I'm going to pay 25, versus someone has one vehicle, they're paying five dollars for access to the same road. Then you look at the residents who use the road on a regular basis, the community in and out of Hamilton, they use the same roads, and they don't pay any fee, and they're not a resident. So it's kind of like a.
Baron, this is a way of finding as many sources as we can to get our fair-to-core roads resurfaced and repaired. And the fact that this council went ahead and said, it's going to go straight to the streets and not to anything else. It's going to be used for the streets specifically. And the fact that it's transparent, it's in a fund all by itself, that you can check and see where that money was spent. And who knows, somebody might be driving your car around town at the same time you're driving your car. So I think the number of cars is, is it, we can talk about that later, but I just don't think that's anything which, which we.
I get where you want to go with that, but like I said, it doesn't equate, it doesn't add up to me as far as says, okay, I'm going to have to pay this amount for the same privilege, and I don't drive that much, right? First is the traffic, the commute in and out. Are they being fined or being charged the same fee or the commuters?
This was a way that the legislature said that we could do to put more money into our street repairs, so we decided to do it.
And Hamilton is the only place that did it.
Well, I think we're the smart ones who have done it. I'll just tell you that.
You take five dollars from me is not smart.
Okay, what's next?
Next, okay. Now, I've got this new schedule for Rumkey.
Yes.
And I'm splitting hairs on this one. It says, I quote, it says, "If you would like to participate in curbside recycling." Now, they're asking me whether I'd like to participate, not that I have to. When you gave me my ben, it made it mandatory. Rumkey says, if I would like to.
Okay, anything else you want to say about that before I start saying?
Yeah, I don't know, you're going to give me a spin, you know? That's what attorneys do.
I'm not going to give you a spin. I'm going to say, thank you for participating in our recycling because it means a lot. It's not where it should be as far as a percentage for our city. We hope that increases. So it does say may, and you don't have to, but we thank you if you're going to do that, Alfred, because we know you care about the appearance of your community and also recycling.
Well, I'm not speaking on my behalf. I know where I stand on this one. I said, I'll run with you on with this one, you know?
All righty.
As my fellow legionnaire.
You're right, we are. We have actually got about 30 seconds left. Let's go to.
Okay, 30 seconds left, okay. I'll leave it at that one because I know when answers are getting here.
Why don't you go to this meeting about potholes, or come talk to any one of us during the day?
No, I'm thinking, well, it'd take longer, but then you'll get together on that. He'll say he'll get back with me on that later on.
Yes.
The other item is, okay, we're having this public meeting. Now, where is the public laboratory for the public?
Those are issues, I mean, those are issues in this entire building. We'll get back to you about that.
Hmm, that's.
Okay.
To get me backs.
That's something we have to talk to the county about as well as?
They're shut down to at four.
Okay, we need, we'll look into that. Okay? Thank you for coming to the audience of citizens, okay?
I know it's been a while, so.
Well, good to see you again. Looks like you're in good health.
Well, thank you kindly.
Thank you, Alfred. Next, we have Jim Loneman.
Good evening, councilman, and new councilman, too. Nice for you to be here. I'm Jim Loneman, at seven oh one Paper Hill Boulevard, Hamilton four five oh one three. And I want to tell you something about city timing or city, I come here, I was talking to Rich for about, you're going through a street, and you can't hardly turn right there on red, and it's just quite the worst it was when we had one road, one in construction back then, two years ago. Remember that? We have some construction there.
There was some.
It's better back then than it is now.
There was some. We actually are working on the timing of our lights through some technology that we are getting into the city. So maybe if we get that new technology going, we should listen to some of your concerns because it's going to change kind of the way the city's going to be, traffic flow, so.
Yeah.
So now might be a little bit premature to talk about that, but, but I know Rich Engel has written down the streets that you mentioned, because he's the one who does accomplish a lot of things that you ask us to do.
Okay, also, what about, uh, I think, uh, it's, um, it's, um, they had, uh, oh, yeah, I can't think of it. Uh, oh, I can't think of it. I can't think of it offhand. I mean, I'm nervous.
Contact us during the day or in the next council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good night.
Good night. I have two people on the list for audience citizens, one Sophia Holly, the other one, Chris.
Fires.
Fires. Do you wish to talk right now during this part of the agenda, or is that just going to be, I think it's just a first reading tonight on Pinnacle?
This is the second one, but I was just here in case there's something that needed answered.
Okay.
I work for Pinnacle.
You work for Pinnacle? Okay.
I'm Sophia Holly. I'll reserve as needed the opportunity to speak, but maybe not. Thank you.
That'll work. Thank you, and so I'm just going to kind of leave these out. When we get to that part of the agenda, we'll ask if you wish to make any kind of comments at that time. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes care of the audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes matters such as approval of minutes, all staff reports, receiving file council information, caucus reports, and two informational reports. One being November two thousand nineteen monthly financial report, one being the two thousand nineteen November monthly investment report. Prior to that particular vote, we're going to do committee of the whole. And that is, the committee of the whole is intended to allow city council to consider all reports on the consent agenda or the caucus agenda under suspended rules that normally would apply to city council. City council may ask questions, provide direction, or comment on the reports that are in the caucus agenda. So I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting be recessed, the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. It is six seventeen. We're now going to go into the committee of the whole. Now, the caucus agenda is on page two of my agenda. We have five items. City manager, there are going to be some comments from city professionals about the caucus agenda.
There'll be several different comments. Some of them will take direction from council if you have any further questions. Otherwise, they may just give a very short presentation. But whatever questions council has, please let them know, and they'll be doing their best to provide those answers for you.
One has to do with the addition of vacates, some right-ofways, Grand Boulevard, Dixie Highway, and some other streets. Looks like Mr. Engel is going to be commenting on that. If you'll introduce yourself to the crowd and see when you're ready to.
Yes, sir. Rich Engel, Director of Engineering. We've got a sketch on the screens for your observation, for you to look at. The area being requested to vacate are the orange areas associated with the construction of the South Hamilton Jim Blunt Overpass project. And then in the future, we'll be coming back and asking for the green areas to be dedicated as public right-ofway. So this is the first step in the process to do the vacation of those areas not needed for right-ofway. And then we'll be back at a future council meeting requesting for establishment of new right-ofway, so to speak. Are there any questions on this?
Questions amongst council. Great. Thank you, Mr. Engel. Second on the caucus agenda is vacating a portion of the Short Street Alley in the second ward of City of Hamilton. Good evening.
Good evening. So this is something that's working its way through the city. It's part of a project that you saw end of last year at eleven fifty-seven Central, which was a proposal for a gas station and also an additional retail building. They are requesting, we are working with them to request that Short Street Alley be vacated, which is in red, but you'll see that there's also a yellow line because it's still an active alley that people are utilizing. So it's being vacated in conjunction with a rededication to the north, and actually will work out better. We think it'll be a safer alignment because it's further away from the Central Knightsbridge intersection. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions at this time? Thank you for the explanation. We now go to a caucus agenda, item number three, contract with Hamilton Parks Conservancy and Golf Operations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, audience of citizens. I'm Tom Vanderhorst, the Executive Director of External Services, and I'm here to discuss with you tonight the proposal to have the golf courses to begin being managed by the Parks Conservancy. So why are we doing this? The Parks Conservancy management allows the city to continue ownership of the properties. The Parks Conservancy has a proven track record. They've been managing the park system since 2015. They're a five oh one C three, and they are able to secure private donations. I think you'll see especially the five oh one C three portion of it with them having a nimble business model when you see what they've already been able to accomplish even before we've consummated this contract. You'll see that it's exciting how quickly they can move. This will also allow the city to redeploy some of our seasoned personnel to focus on other strategic initiatives. So how is the proposal going to take place? What do we have to do and what will be in front of council? So there will be an amendment to the Hamilton Parks Conservancy Management Agreement. There will be a new license agreement for the existing golf equipment, which is similar to what we did when we initiated the Parks Conservancy Management Agreement. There was a lease agreement for the current equipment for them to use it. And they're a little bit different. There will be an employee lease agreement. So there are three key personnel for the golf courses, which are the golf superintendent, the golf course maintenance supervisor, and the concessions and tournament manager. Those employees will continue to be employed by the City of Hamilton, and the Parks Conservancy will reimburse us monthly for their employment costs. So additional details. The city funding of this, the city has agreed to, once the contract has been executed, to take whatever's in Fund Two fifty, or Five sixty, which is the golf fund, which is currently about $250,000. That money will be transferred over as a management fee to the Parks Conservancy. $300,000 will also be given to the Parks Conservancy for the purchase of two new fleets of club carts. That money was actually budgeted and dispersed in 2019. So when the year in financials come out, that will be reflected in that. The city will continue to own and insure the properties, and the alcohol permits that are currently at Potter's and Twin Run will be transferred to the Parks Conservancy. So planned improvements for 2020. Before I move on to this, I know Adam Helms is here. I'd like to kind of give kudos to Adam because he's been running the golf courses for a while. He's been, he's made them sustainable, and this is something that, because of that, we're able to transition to this new model. So so far, there have been 140 new golf carts that have been ordered with USB ports for a total cost of $650,000. There's $269,000 in new Toro golf equipment that has, that will be leased by the Parks Conservancy that will help with the efficiency of maintaining the golf courses. The irrigation repairs of $80,000 were completed today, and that was something that, if you'll recall, there was damage to the irrigation system through a lightning strike that insurance proceeds took care of. The clubhouse remodeling, there's about $30,000 in clubhouse remodeling at Potter's. Steve told me today that they're going to restore the other fireplace. There's two fireplaces when you walk in. The one on the left is currently there. There's another one on the right that was behind a pegboard that'll be restored. And so far, he has deforested over eight acres with more to come. So in 2020, the improvements will exceed a million dollars. And just to give you an idea of the partnership, Steve has started a lot of this even before this, because of the goodwill that the city and the Parks Conservancy has. Any questions?
Any questions? From what I've seen with golf courses, it's been a significant improvement appearance-wise along Columbia Road, Honey Suckle, which is thanks for healing visual, higher course. I think it's going to pay off along with very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four has to do with duty to keep sidewalks and repair and clean. Are you doing that, Mr. Williams or Mr. Engel? I'm not sure he's doing that.
I'll do it, sir.
Introduce yourself to the crowd.
Good evening, council, mayor, and citizens and distinguished guests. My name is Jim Williams. I'm the Public Work Director for the City of Hamilton. And so the, what we were doing was amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of City of Hamilton, section five, twenty-one point oh six, duty to keep sidewalks and repair and clean. It's just clarification language to ensure that the property owners know to repair the transitions as the, as the drives may, excuse me, bless you, may enter the right-ofway.
The driveway apron area?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from Mr. Williams about this caucus agenda item?
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, the apron at the end of the driveway, so if there were to be road work done, gutters, things done, maybe even in resurfacing, it doesn't change the responsibility to put it back to its proper state from the city? Did I say that right?
Correct. This is, if we're doing our work there, then the city's responsibility is to repair that to natural, to the state it should be in order.
Okay.
This is where maybe a drive extends into the right-ofway, and the drive is made of asphalt, and there's maybe potholes to that effect. That is the property owner's responsibility to fill those holes. And that's the clarification that was needed because in some of our commercial properties, they, in some cases, thought it was the city's responsibility to fill those, but in essence, it was the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
The five on the caucus agenda has to do with the traffic code penalties. Mr. Engel?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As part of some recent changes and upgrades to the parking system, including software to allow customers to pay these parking fines online and through our lobby kiosk, we've decided to adjust the fine from five dollars to $10 for the initial violation. But in conjunction with that, we've also extended the timeframe today. If you were to receive a parking violation fine, you would have to pay it by midnight tonight in order to pay the five dollars. But with the new system that we're proposing, you would have 48 hours from the day it was, the violation was received, from midnight of that day, you would have 48 hours to pay the $10 fine as well as the other fines in, listed in our proposal in the legislation. Any questions regarding that?
It's one of our ordinance review commissions, is that correct? This is reviewed by the ordinance review commission, is that correct?
Yes, we presented it in December to the ordinance review committee, yes.
Any questions or comments about this?
I have one question, Mr. Engel.
Yes.
So was the last time it was increased, 2007? Did I read that correctly in there? I don't know when the last parking increase was, but I thought I saw 2007 in there.
Appears to be 2000, well, I guess there, there have been different variations made over the years. The one says 2007, another one says 2005. So it just depends on what section was being revised.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted clarification if anyone asked, how long has it been?
Yeah, it has been a lengthy period of time, yes.
Yes, thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions or direction needed on the caucus agenda, I'll accept the motion of the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. It is six twenty-nine. Now, I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
We reconvene at 6:30. The next thing we have to do is, I'll accept the motion, with the exception of any items so noted, the council receive those reports on the consent agenda and concur in their recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to the public hearing. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be recessed and the following public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, now going to the public hearing at 6:31. If you'll please read the public hearing into the record, Mr. City Clerk.
A public hearing regarding amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of the property located at 1570 Grand Boulevard, situated in the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, 5th Ward from I-2 Industrial District to IPD Industrial Plan Development District, the Model Group, and YWCA Hamilton applicants.
Thank you. Any audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving a change of zoning of the property located at 1570 Grand Boulevard? You want to sign the book, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, if you're here to speak at this public hearing, Wendy, I believe that you did sign the book. If you want to come on up and address the hearing.
Honorable mayor, members of council, and fellow citizens. My name is Wendy Waters Cornell and I'm the Executive Director for the YWCA Hamilton. We are a social service organization whose mission is eliminating racism and empowering women. We have three primary programs that we operate, the first of which is the only domestic violence shelter in the entire county. It is full every day and we no sooner have a family move out and a new family member comes in. We also operate supportive housing, 31 units at 244 Dayton Street in Hamilton, that iconic gorgeous building in the middle of German Village. We have two youth programs in the public school system. The first is called Fierce Girls and the second is Men of Honor. And those are empowerment programs developing future leaders. We are grateful for the council's consideration of this zoning change, which will enable us to look at the possibility of a new development. It is a transformational time in our city and in our mission, and I need a bigger boat. I need a bigger piece of land and I need a state-of-the-art building. We are working with the distinguished Model Group to develop an extraordinary building that will be full of 45 one-bedroom apartments for the women who live there, in addition to doubling the space for domestic violence sheltering. We also take survivors of human trafficking in that domestic violence shelter. So, we graciously ask for your consideration of this zoning. It is part of the necessary process for us to finalize our grant application. This is a multi-tiered capital stack. Nine million of it comes in the form of low-income housing tax credits. And then the remaining forms are parts of county home funds, city home funds, and federal home loan banks applications. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Wendy involving the project, which is described on the screen as well as that in a bird's eye view of the layout? Questions or comments from council at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is it Jennifer Walker? Sorry, I mispronounced your name.
Quite right. Good evening, mayor, members of council. My name is Jennifer Walkie and I'm with the Model Group. We have the honor of partnering with the Hamilton Y on this development as co-developers. I won't add to Wendy's comments in the interest of time. I think she did a great job summarizing the project, but I did want to let you know that I'm here and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I want to also thank you for your consideration of this request, this critical project. Thanks.
Do you believe I saw that you had other projects in order to this one across the United States? Is that correct? You've done projects in order to this?
Correct. We've developed or working on, we have completed or under construction about 11 permanent supportive housing projects utilizing low-income housing tax credits in the area.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the change of zoning of the property located at 1570 Grand Boulevard? First reading for this is tonight. Anyone on council which should be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. By Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Public hearing is closed at 6:35. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan to reconvene the regular meeting. Roll call vote to reconvene the meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, 6:36, we reconvene the regular meeting. We now go to council actions pertaining legislative items. And now, I'll accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation. Agenda item number three, which is the second reading of an ordinance involving Pinnacle Treatment Centers.
An ordinance approving a request by Pinnacle Treatment Centers, Pinnacle, for a conditional use approval to allow the operation of a medical assisted treatment center on property zoned I-2 Industrial Zoning District, located at 8500 Bilstein Boulevard, parcel ID P6461059000038, side lot number 26021W234.62 of S185.67 of N2605.56, situated in the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, 6th Ward, North Side, Pinnacle Treatment Centers applicants.
Thank you. This time, the two individuals who are here from Pinnacle wish to address council before we have any discussion or take the vote on this one. If you'll state your name and your address and subject to be addressed.
Good evening, my name's Sophia Hawley. I'm an attorney for Pinnacle and my address is 1 East 4th Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. Thank you, council, for considering this request. If you have any requests or questions, I'm happy to discuss them, but I'm happy to turn it over as well.
Chris, did you want to, any questions for Ms. Hawley at this time? Chris, did you want to make any comments or statements at this time?
Same, same positions.
And, but your position is what exactly with Pinnacle?
I'm the vice president of the division.
Anybody have any kind of questions specifically for the vice president?
I do, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Chris, if you'll come up to the podium and Councilmember Ryan's got a question?
Chris, thanks for joining us tonight. I personally feel that this is something that we desperately need in Hamilton with your mental addiction counseling, just getting people some, some help. So, I was looking through your, your notes here and I noticed that people are referred to Pinnacle through local physicians and hospitals. So, my, my question is, what, how can people get referred if they, if they don't have medical care? Like the homeless, how?
There is also self-referral accepted. We have a hotline set up for 24 hours a day for people to call and get scheduled for an intake appointment. They kind of go through the process with them, do the initial screening to make sure that they're appropriate for our level of care. And if not, then they have a list of providers in the area that we've gathered already that even now, if someone called, we could get them into a different treatment program of some type that may fit their need.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for individuals who spoke? Is there a motion this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any more discussion about this prior to the roll call vote? I want to say that this did go through a public hearing at the Planning Commission and there are conditions that are attached to this approval. And I just want to say that I know that Pinnacle has reached out to some agencies so there could be some referrals for financial literacy, for job skills and the like. I know one of them happens to be self, which is supposed to encourage low-income families. So, I hope that you continue reaching out to those individuals and entities that you can partner with, okay? Any other discussion or comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 6-0.
Okay, we go to agenda item number four, which is second reading of an ordinance involving traditional neighborhoods.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of the property located at 2604, 2616, 2628, and 2636, Benninghoffen Avenue, parcel numbers P6461051000062 from B-2 Community Business, Community Business to TN-1 Traditional Neighborhood-1 zoning district and 2640, 2652, 2668, 2670, and 2704, Benninghoffen Avenue, parcel numbers P6461051000067 through P6461051000072 and P64610510000872, TN-3 Traditional Neighborhood-3 zoning district, situated in the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion about this one? I want the record to reflect that we've on the screen, the bird's eye view of this, as well as the title of each one of these agenda items that are being read by the city clerk are also on the three screens in the council chambers. Any further discussion at all? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 6-0.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number five, second reading of an ordinance involving Diversity and Inclusion Commission.
An ordinance amending Chapter 155 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to the Diversity and Inclusion Commission and repealing existing Chapter 155 thereof.
I pass that and be put up on the screen, the comparison of the restructuring, excuse me, of before this legislation and then after this legislation, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any comments about this particular restructuring legislation? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 6-0.
We now go to agenda item number six, second reading of ordinance involving the registration of vacant commercial and industrial buildings.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Sections 1507.05 through 1507.07 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to the registration of vacant commercial and industrial buildings and repealing existing Sections 1507.05 through 1507.07 thereof.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any questions or comments amongst council about this particular ordinance? Any comments anybody wanted to make on the city administration about this one? Thank you. Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 6-0.
Thank you. We now go to new legislation. Agenda item number seven, first reading of an ordinance involving a conditional use of property on Cleveland Avenue.
An ordinance approving a request for a conditional use certificate to operate a major repair business at 1040 Cleveland Avenue, property zoned I-1 Libid Industrial Zoning District, situated in the 2nd Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number eight, which is first reading of an ordinance involving changing the zoning at 1570 Grand Boulevard.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of the property located at 1570 Grand Boulevard, situated in the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, 5th Ward from I-1 Industrial District to IPD Industrial Plan Development District, the Model Group, and YWCA Hamilton applicant.
Okay. These legislative items will be, have a second reading at a future council meeting with an actual vote at that time. These are just first readings. We now go to agenda item number nine, which is first reading of an ordinance involving an alley, City of Hamilton.
An ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of right-of-way South F Street Alley B, located between Main Street and Main Street Alley, situated in the 1st Ward, South Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, John Park applicant.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 10, which is first reading of an ordinance for property located at 128 Walnut Street.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 128 Walnut Street.
Thank you. Agenda item number 11, first reading of an ordinance involving property located at 400 Mill Road.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 400 Mill Road.
Thank you. Agenda item number 12, first reading of an ordinance involving property located at 409 Home Avenue.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 409 Home Avenue.
Thank you. Agenda item number 13 has two readings, it's an emergency ordinance involving property located at 431 and 441 North 2nd Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing directing the city manager to execute a development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions with Gail Underwood regarding 431 and 441 North 2nd Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Roll call vote on that motion.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions with Gail Underwood regarding 431 and 441 North 2nd Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion, comments, or questions about this particular ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 6-0.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number 14, treating ordinance involving Schedule A Classification and Compensation Plan.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification and Compensation Plan of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2019-2-11, adopted February 27, 2019, as amended from time to time relative to salaries for certain city employees and repealing existing Schedule A as set forth in said ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Okay, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification and Compensation Plan of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and compensation plan of the safe Hamilton, Ohio as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR two zero one nine dash two dash one one, adopted February twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, and is amended from time to time relative to salaries for certain city employees and repealing existing Schedule A as set forth in said ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any comments, uh, questions about this particular, uh, piece of legislation? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at six zero.
That being emergency ordinance, we were able to have both readings and a vote on that one tonight. We go to agenda item number fifteen, resolution involving the Butler County Transportation Improvement District.
A resolution appointing Vice Mayor Eric Pullman to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Butler County Transportation Improvement District for the remainder of the unexpired term commencing January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and terminating December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comment about this resolution, which can be voted on tonight? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
We go to agenda item number sixteen, which is a resolution involving council meeting dates for the calendar year two thousand and twenty.
A resolution amending resolution number R two zero one nine dash twelve dash sixty-eight establishing the City of Hamilton, Ohio, city council regular meeting dates for the calendar year two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
That the resolution be adopted? Make a motion?
Sorry. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. And for the record, uh, we've got the meeting dates up on the screen right now that are, uh, highly ordinary ones, uh, including this one, one meeting in July, in November, and December. We will meet as many times as necessary, but it'll be definitely those dates set up, uh, due to, um, holiday on the calendar. So we've got a, uh, first and a second. Any discussion or questions about these regular meeting dates for calendar year two thousand and twenty? Okay, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We now go to agenda item number seventeen, which is a resolution involving enterprise zone agreement.
A resolution authorizing directing the execution of enterprise zone agreement with GR Three Sandbox Partners LLC relative to real property tax abatement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Vaughn, I think was seconded by Councilmember Ryan, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion or comments about this resolution and the enterprise zone agreement? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six zero.
Okay. We now go to the, uh, audience of the city manager. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of items to update, uh, council on in the, uh, public. Uh, number one, uh, the pricing of the final round of Spooky Nook bonds will take place, um, next Wednesday, January twenty-second. Um, there was an investor call today that I participated in with Piper Jaffrey. Um, we had fifteen, uh, institutional investors that participated in the call. Uh, so the pricing of those bonds will take place January twenty-second. Uh, the closing of those bonds will happen on February sixth. So that would include things like the tax increment finance bonds, the pace energy bonds. Again, that's not on the city. Those are, uh, on Spooky Nook. I believe we have one non-tax revenue, uh, bond that'll be, uh, part of that. So we have a very small piece of this, but, uh, primarily this is Spooky Nook doing their final pieces of financing for the capital stack. Speaking of Spooky Nook, uh, I know traffic came up earlier tonight. Uh, the one thing, uh, the traffic department did about two weeks ago, they extended the green light on High and Main Street from MLK to the main Eaton Millville intersection by thirty seconds. Um, just observing traffic, it's still not the best, uh, so we'll continue to work with traffic engineering, see if we can tweak that with the, uh, increase in construction activity that's going to start taking place, uh, on B Street by the Black Street Bridge. I'm anticipating we're going to have some other type of delays, so we're going to have to do a better job of trying to, uh, figure out timing and working on different routes for individuals. Also, uh, one last item with Spooky Nook, uh, I talked with the Butler County Visitors Bureau, uh, earlier this week, and they'll be out there next week, but they are incredibly excited. They've already booked an event in the summer of two thousand and twenty-two, and they're going to be out there talking about booking some other events. So, um, it's going to be fun in a couple of years to see a million-plus new visitors coming into town on an annual basis. Uh, coffees with the city managers are currently being scheduled, so I just put that out there. If you are aware of any groups that would have an interest, um, I'm going to try to get at least a half a dozen coffees with the city manager scheduled before summertime. So again, it doesn't matter if it's a school, a church, a neighborhood, um, frankly, if a, an individual wanted to have me come over with a group of neighbors, I'm willing to do that. Uh, just trying to get those on the schedule. Uh, you may have seen recently that the, uh, federal treasury has released new rules on opportunity zones. I believe council's aware that the City of Hamilton has two identified opportunity zones that have been established by the federal government. Uh, one of them is in the Lindenwald area, east of University Boulevard. The other one is in the Rossville area, north of Main Street, actually extends through Rossville North, um, past the Spooky Nook area. I believe we're, now that the rules are in place by the treasury, I think we're going to see a lot, now that they know what the rules are, we're going to see a lot more interest in, uh, redevelopment in those areas. That includes the Riverview area also. Finally, uh, strategic planning, I believe, uh, most council have indicated they've held the date of April first from four to nine P M. Um, as I indicated, we're going to get a, a pre-strategic planning priority exercise out to council here in the, probably the next week or two. Um, the first thing we need council to do is to take a look at it. If we're missing anything, just go ahead to, to Google Docs, you can add right to that document, then we'll get it finalized, and we'll get it back out to council for, uh, prioritization purposes. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And, and we as a city have been responsive to the, uh, the traffic flow on B Street, pretty well. We've done a few things to, to help traffic flow.
Yes, and the, one thing I was in remiss in saying this, one thing that you mentioned earlier tonight, the Centrac system that we received a grant for?
Yes.
Uh, through OKI. Unfortunately, that probably won't get installed until, Rich, were you guessing, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two, due to the funding. And we actually got a, got it advanced one year beyond, or before they were actually going to give it to us. So it was going to be twenty twenty-three, and now it's twenty twenty-two.
Uh, one of the things that, uh, Centrac system will hopefully eliminate is if you're sitting at a red light and there's no cross-traffic coming, it will recognize that and it'll cycle through the traffic signals much more quickly. And it's a, it's an adaptive system that uses smart technology that, um, hopefully will be able to push traffic through a little bit faster than what we've seen, um, in recent times. But thank you.
Here we are locked in on that grant. It is ours.
It is our grant. As, yes, sir.
Great.
May I ask, uh, one question?
Please.
The work that's going on over on B Street right now, uh, weather's been good. Can we assume things are on track?
Rich, you have an update on that?
Yes, we anticipate that that work will be finished by the end of next week, and then we can open B Street back up. But again, next week looks to be rather cold temperatures. I don't know if that's going to affect it very much or not. We're finishing up the water main, and now they have to go through the testing process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments to the city manager?
I have a, I have a comment.
Please.
Actually, Joshua, I run, I run that Eaton Avenue and High Street all the time. I mean, I do it purposely, and I think the thirty seconds has helped out a lot, and I still think it's backed up because of the B Street construction. And I'm just wondering, once you open that back up, how much better that's going to be? Because before I would just ignore Eaton Avenue and kind of cut back around, you know, go down Park, but it's, um, or down Ross. But I really think it's a lot better. Came down tonight, and usually it was backed up into Park Avenue and was a mess, but I, I, I'm, I'm wondering what it's going to look like once we get B Street back open. I, I think the timing helped out a lot, in my opinion. You can get across town a lot faster, so. I know it's going to take some more adjustments, but I think it was a good job to do that at least. Just an observation.
Being responsive.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions for the city manager at this time? If they may go to the audience, the city council. Couple of things we wanted to do was, was to discuss the Ohio Municipal Electric Association representative and to create an alternate for that position. I think there's been some interest expressed by Councilmember Ryan, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think we have an idea, speaking with Mr. Logan, that we have an alternate in the event that there was an issue when someone could not make those particular events, because they're obviously very important, us owning our, our own utilities. Alternate, uh, I know you expect interest, Councilmember Fear, is that correct?
I'd be happy to do it.
Uh, that, that, that's good transition, good consistency. Is there anybody, uh, who has any kind of issue with those being our representatives at O M E A? Uh, does this need to be a vote, uh, Madam Law Director?
It wouldn't hurt. I think we should get it on the record.
Motion then that we, as a council, appoint Councilmember Ryan as representative for O M E A with Councilmember Fear as the alternate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, sent by Councilmember, uh, Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We have a vacancy right now in the Civil Service Commission. I believe we wanted to, uh, try and address that this evening, so, uh, they can start resuming their, their meetings and council has before it. The questionnaires, there were completed by, I think, three individuals. All three were, are very, very qualified for the position. There's a discussion about civil service at this time. So we can possibly address, address that, so they can, um, meet with a full group of three members. Said they're all three very qualified. Our goal would be that, that if we select someone, the other two, we will definitely find a place for somewhere in one of our commissions and boards, because, uh, I was impressed by all three of their, uh, of the questionnaires, and I think that's, I think council would probably agree on that. I see, uh, shaking their heads up and down. Anybody, anybody wants to make a motion on at this point in time to open it up for discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I guess when I reviewed these, and again, fairly new at this, but as I looked at it, I considered the residency of the applicants, also their involvement in the city, um, their commitment and ability to serve, I believe, based on things that they have shared with us. And I believe, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, um, Marciello?
Christopher Marciello, is that it?
I think it's, that's.
I think we all know who he is.
Yeah.
Pronouncing his last name was a crazy problem, but not that, that of a problem. Yes, I, I, I agree with you. I think he is highly qualified.
Yes. I do, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. I know he's involved in various government and public service. He's a teacher, he's history leader in Hamilton, and, uh, he's definitely, definitely need to consider him in a very strong way. I think that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
And he, he's been on some councils too, so.
He's been involved.
Yeah, he's been involved. That's what I was looking at.
Seventeen strong, I think, and, um.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and I think.
Please.
I think one thing, like in looking at all three of them, as you said, they're all very qualified. But I think the one thing that stands out with him is I know that he served on the Charter Review Committee. And, and to have that kind of insight already in things that go on with the city, I think will help, since he's got to step in and fill a vacancy with civil service, a very short learning curve for him.